All right. We're now ready to call the, call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, December 9th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Alderman Stralcek.
I'm here.
Alderman Talaco.
Here.
Alderman Meyer.
Here.
Alderman Hanscher.
Here.
Alderman Bach.
Here.
Alderman Parrish.
Here.
Alderman Bratt.
Here.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mayor Nurban.
Here. First up, we have a couple of public hearings, the first of which, Ordinance 2025-1686, an ordinance approving a rezoning of the properties located at 11030, 11020, 10950, North Punch Rock Avenue, 11027 Northwestern Drive, and the property immediately to the south of Town Center, from Town Center to with a planned unit development in connection with the planned residential development consisting of 58 rowhouse-style dwelling units, a mixed-use commercial building, and open space, associated open space. This was recommended by the Planning Commission October 27th in first reading last month at council on November 11th. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of entering public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are back in regular session and will take up consideration of the ordinance. Are there any questions for staff or a, a motion?
I'd move approval.
Alderman Talaco, is it, well, sorry.
I'll just make a quick comment. I am not in favor of this development. I am not in favor of the rowhouses. I don't think it fits with the character of Mequon. I don't think that's what our residents necessarily want. This was approved prior to me becoming an alderman, so I will be in support of it tonight, knowing that this will be the last condensed development that I hope that Mequon sees for a very, very long time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or a motion? Alderman Meyer.
I do have just one quick comment. I will be voting for it, but I'm also concerned about the compaction of all the people we have in a complete area over there. I know that we need to have residents to support the area inside there, but I think we're overdoing it a little bit in here, and I think that consideration in the next, if something comes forward, will be a little bit different on my part.
Any other comments? We'll point out this uses most of the available land left in, in Town Center, so there's not going to be much room to do much else.
Yeah, all but one or two lots, correct?
There's a couple, a couple of lots left. That's about it, yeah. Is there a motion or another comment, Alderman Stralcek?
I'm in agreement with the other aldermen. I sat on Planning Commission for this one, and I think based on the parameters within Town Center, this, this really fits. There was a lot of thoughtful design on pedestrian traffic and how the pedestrian flow would work through the property. Again, you know, my goal is to have less apartments in here and more retail. I, I don't think we have the amount of retail that we, that we want within the, in the community. You know, I find it hard to drive through Cedarburg just due to the traffic and all the people stopping and starting and going in and out of the retail stores there and the activity and the hustle and the bustle. And my vision for Town Center was a little closer to, you know, a mixed-use residential, but again, a little bit more in that shopping and retail. So we do have a mixed-use building in this one. We have a couple of mixed-use buildings that aren't, you know, fully tenanted out. I would encourage the developers to, you know, see what they can do to get tenants into those mixed-use buildings to try to, you know, make this the residential walkable community in which people have things to walk to that we envisioned when we originally came up with this plan and not just, you know, a series of a little more dense housing and things like that through downtown. So, you know, I made a motion to approve, you know, kind of based on, you know, my experience through Planning Commission and what I've seen through the ordinance. You know, it fits what that is and what that was set up to do, but, you know, again, highlighting the fact that I think we missed the mark a little bit on the retail side of things.
Can certainly appreciate that point of view. I think a lot of the, a lot of the, what I hear from the development side is, we need more bodies walking through the stores to support it, so this will, it's a, it's a balance. You need, you need a little bit of both, so. Any other comments? That was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any other comments or questions for staff? Hearing done, let's call the roll.
Alderman Stralcek.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hanscher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We'll move on to Ordinance 2025-1687, an ordinance amending Chapter 58 of the Mequon Municipal Code, allowing two-family residential cluster developments as conditional uses within the city's neighborhood commercial zoning district. This was recommended by Planning Commission on October 27th, further recommended by Public Welfare on November 11th, and was also a first reading at Common Council on November 11th. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor of entering public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
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 We are now back in regular session and will consider this ordinance before us.
Mayor, I need to reclusive myself from Ordinance 2025-1687.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions or motions from anyone other than Alderman Meyer? Okay, no questions. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any, any discussion? Questions for staff? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Hanscher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcek.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We'll move on to personal appearances and public comments. Citizens wishing to address the Common Council on any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. If you desire to be heard on an agenda item, you may be heard when that item is considered on the agenda. Please speak into the microphone at the podium. The time limit is five minutes. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium or ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record so the clerk can get it written down.
My name is Rosemary O'Byrne.
Can you push the button on the, on the microphone to make sure, turn there, there you go, Green's Live.
My name is Rosemary O'Byrne, and I live at 1434 West Westport Circle since 2005. And the reason I'm here is I would like to petition the Common Council to allow the erection of a creche at Christmas season.
Could you repeat that, please?
I would like to petition the Common Council to allow a creche, a Christmas creche, to be erected for the community during the Christmas season.
Okay, we will take your, your comments under advisement, but we, we're not allowed to have a dialogue because it's not on the agenda, but maybe we could have someone collect your comments in more detail? Is there anything else you'd wish to discuss or, or talk to us about?
We were just under the understanding that if, if there was a moment that we could petition the Common Council to allow the erection of a creche, a city property.
Well, we, this item's not on the agenda. We can't have a dialogue or consider it. We can only listen to public.
We were just saying that there was a moment, there was a time that that was allowed.
It's, it's just public comment. There is, it's not really a petition.
I mean.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone, thank you, Jack. Is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda? If not, we'll close public comment and move on to public officials' reports. I'd first like to just start by thanking those who came out for Winter Wonderland on Sunday. I do apologize that it conflicted with the Packer game, but we didn't intend to do that, but the NFL changed the schedule, so thanks again to the committee for putting on a wonderful event and, and sincerely appreciate all those who came out to brave the cold. I do have one mayoral proclamation to give, and I'm going to actually come around front and have the recipient come up with me, and we'll read it together in, in front here. Hopefully the camera can get us here. This is a proclamation from the City of Mequon, recognizing Tina Schwante as for a dedicated service as the Executive Director of the Mequon-Thensville Chamber of Commerce. Tina Schwante has faithfully served the citizens and businesses of Mequon as the Executive Director of the Mequon-Thensville Chamber of Commerce over the last 16 years. During her tenure with the Chamber, Tina has overseen incredible growth to more than 400 members today. Under her direction, the Mequon-Thensville Chamber of Commerce now ranks as one of the larger and more active chambers in the region. Tina's passion for promoting the area's small business through the Chamber was only one part of her commitment to the community. No matter how long the day, evening or weekend, Tina put in the hours to make each event a success. Her presence made the Chamber a connector, not just within the Mequon in Thensville, but throughout Ozaki County, helping businesses and community members learn and grow. Her smiling face was present at hundreds of ribbon-cutting events for new businesses, networking lunches, Chamber events, and fundraisers. Tina has been a vital force in welcoming new businesses to the area and has created a foundation for the Chamber to continue providing opportunities for small business owners to build meaningful relationships. Her leadership has laid the groundwork for the Chamber members to create a more, to create more connections and strengthen their presence and growth throughout the community. Accordingly, I, Mayor Andy Nurban, on behalf of all the citizens of Mequon proclaim tomorrow, Wednesday, December 10th, is Tina Schwante's Day, and the City of Mequon, in recognition for her years of loyal and devoted service, as Tina prepares to enjoy life's next chapter, we wish her all the best for her prosperous, exciting, and healthy future. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say that I'm so honored, and it has been such a privilege to represent the business community in this amazing city and in the Mequon-Thensville community. I'm just so, so grateful and honored, and it's, it's been a wonderful opportunity, so I'm very fortunate, and I appreciate this so much. I'm not expected at all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and, and congratulations again, Tina. I've had the privilege of probably attending more than 100 ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings with you over the year, and it's always been very impressive, the way you welcome new businesses and merchants into the community and make them feel welcome and a part of our, our wonderful city. So thank you and all the best. Just a couple of quick items here, Mayor, and members of the council. Nomination papers were made available for the upcoming spring election back on December 1st. There are three aldermanic seats open next spring in District 2, District 3, and District 5. Nomination paperwork for anyone interested in putting in for any of these seats on the Common Council can be obtained on the city website or from the city clerk's office here at City Hall. Collecting signatures is ongoing, and all paperwork must be submitted to the city clerk by no later than Tuesday, January 6th, right after the new year. A primary, if needed, will be held on February 17th, and the spring election next year will be on April 7th, 2026. Also, today, property taxes were mailed out to all residents and property owners in the community, and there are many ways for residents and property owners to pay their taxes by the January 31st due date. Payments can be made online, through the city website, in person, here at City Hall, or at either of the two Port Washington State Bank locations in Mequon and Thensville, by the good old-fashioned dropping it in the postal box and putting a stamp on the bill, or, as I mentioned, in person here at City Hall. And notably, City Hall will be closed on several days as the holidays are approaching. We will be closed on Wednesday, December 24th, for Christmas Eve, as well as Christmas Day. City Hall will be open for four hours in the morning on December 31st, New Year's Eve Day, and then closed on January 1st for New Year's Day as well. That is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have seven various reports or meeting minutes and one resolution. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or would anyone like an item removed?
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Well, there we go, there's no, no discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We have no ordinances this evening. We do have several resolutions, however. The first of which is Resolution 4243, a resolution authorizing final plat for Phase 2 of Swan Ridge Farms, a single-family residential subdivision consisting of 42 lots of a total of 83 lots located immediately south and west of 10129 North Swan Road. So recommended by the Planning Commission on December 1st. I think we have at least, at least one person from the public registered to speak, although more may pop up throughout the evening. So the first of which is Jane Chivaco of 10129 North Swan Road, says, supports and wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I was here at the Planning Commission last week, and I live at 10129 North Swan Road, so this subdivision is now my south and west border. And for the last 37 years, the water that flowed through and around my property went downhill and, and watered the crops. And since the elevation of the land to my south has been raised by about three feet, and there's a new about four-foot-high wall of the retention pond, there have been some water flow issues, and I think it's made worse for the Huntington Park residents. And the thing I forgot to ask last week at Planning Commission is, I believe I was told that there was going to be a final grading to the east of that pond where there would be a layer of topsoil so that when there was rain, the vegetation in the topsoil would act to hold some of that water. And certainly watching this project, I never saw that happen. And I think that if it is supposed to happen, and it hasn't, maybe because the weather turned so nasty so quickly, will that happen in the spring so that some of that water will no longer either stagnate on the clay that's there now or flow into Huntington Park? So appreciate that consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that wishes to speak? Please come up to the podium, just give your name and address and.
My name is Bob Quick. I live at 9220 West Stanford Court, which is directly to the north of where our fellow resident on Swan Road was talking about. She is absolutely correct that in 2025, the actions that have been taken by the developers so far resulted in our street and our properties, and there are other property owners here with me tonight, getting flooded five times during the fiscal year 2025. Part of that is because what they did is they did remove the topsoil. We were told it was going to come back. We agree, we never saw them bring the topsoil back. They also removed the drain tiles that were underground. So for the 31 years that I've lived here in Mequon, when we had excess rain events, the water would accumulate in the farm field in about a 25-acre depression area and slowly be absorbed and then drain past our houses and across Stanford Court to the north side of where I live, where there's a creek. Those drain tiles were removed as part of the development process in building the new retention pond. So now what's happened is the retention pond wall that she speaks of, that raised the retention pond about three feet to four feet, the water now flows directly to our property from Swan Road to our houses and floods our houses. We're also getting all the property water from the south to the north of Swan Ridge, and we're getting water now from the west to the east from Concord Drive coming towards Swan Road that flows between four of our houses and is flooding our street and flooding our houses. We've not seen the, the additional topsoil be put in there. I understand there's supposed to be a vegetation plan. We would ask that before you guys get final approval to this proposal tonight, that there be more discussion and action taken on that vegetation plan so that there can be topsoil to, to reduce the amount of water. What's hap, we don't want to repeat in '26 what happened in '25 and have five events where our road is flooded and the people can't get across the road and, quite frankly, our house is being flooded. I lived here 31 years. We didn't get flooded five times in 31 years. So the work is clearly not finished, so that's why we're here tonight to ask that the aldermen actually not approve the plan as in, in its final version, but request that the continued work be done and help us with that so that our properties are not flooded, either on Swan Road or on Stanford Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I live at 9211 West Stanford Court. I presented at the Planning Commission, the, about a third of that area that, that was covered where the drainage used to go into the center of the field, a third of that water now is going around the, the retention pond and coming down through the properties, un, flowing. As is indicated, the water, I've lived there since 1997, and the water is higher this year than I, several times than I, in all the time I've been there. So I think something needs, needs to be further done, not only there, but even downstream to get the water that does need to come through there out, out better.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to, I know staff's prepared some, prepared to answer some of the questions, so maybe we'll just dive right into that. Is Cole handling these?
Yeah.
Thank you, Cole.
Yeah, absolutely. I can start with a little background that can answer most of the questions. So, consideration tonight is final plat. That's basically just us verifying that the terms of development agreement, the conditions that we put on them at time of preliminary plat have been met. Those conditions have been met, all the DA requirements have been met. So we've been aware of downstream flooding issues in the Huntington Park area for several years. There's a portion of the road that overtaps quite frequently due to several different issues. During the construction of the property, during construction of the subdivision, that work was completed in mid-November, a lot of these issues that the homeowners have brought up to us and, and you were occurring before final grading was completed of the subdivision, the, the water that would normally go into the, into the pond in the post condition when everything is completed wasn't at the time during construction while they're actively grading, creating the pond, all that kind of, all that kind of stuff. So the lack of vegetation and temporary erosion control as well during the process of construction also impacted how site was, how the site was draining, but that's no longer the case after the construction is completed. We've now completed the, we have the certification from the stormwater pond, which basically means it's been surveyed and certified by a third-party engineer that that's working properly and meeting city MMSD and DNR requirements. So the subdivision now releases stormwater at lower rates than in the pre-development, even considering the priests, the pre-development conditions of the site, including low areas and things of that nature. So two last things, the erosion control obligations, there's a lot of comments about topsoiling and things. The site's been topsoiled, but the whole site hasn't been completely vegetated. There were some areas that were, but we're, we have that permit open. We're required to do monthly inspections of that until the site is vegetated as part of our erosion control permit and DNR requirements, so that's something that will be ongoing with staff. And then as well, the Huntington Park drainage issue, we have some downstream issues that we're working with the HOA to perform some outlaw drainageway maintenance that has not been done in a while, so we are following up on that, and the city's going to continue to evaluate the downstream facilities to make sure everything is up to our standards. So in conclusion, you know, it's, it's met all our standards so far that we know of. We haven't seen anything that would lead us to believe otherwise, and like I said, we'll continue to main, keep track of the restoration ongoing in spring and the downstream maintenance obligations of the HOA. Thanks.
Any questions from council now? Alderman Hanscher.
So this development's in my district, so I just want to get some things in order here. So the development has, the city looked at it, the DNR looked at it, the MMSD looked at it, and a third-party contractor looked at it, and they all signed off saying that the, am I correct that the water flow is what is supposed to be coming off from the Swan Ridge Farms?
Correct, yep. That, that's all been reviewed by us, a third party, and all of those regulating bodies that you mentioned.
Okay, so all of them signed off on it?
Yep.
Okay, the next question I have is, so the HOA in Huntington Park has to look at the creek that falls, that flows on the north side of Stanford Court, correct? Then still needs to be taken care of in order for the water issue. Next thing that, we had a meeting in September talking about the pipe that flows underneath Stanford Court. Has that been looked at?
It has not been looked at yet. We looked at it at least for maintenance things, like making sure it's not been clogged, things like that, that our highway department can do. We've looked at that and made sure that that's functioning properly, but we still need to look at the, the sizing and if there needs to be improvements of, of that nature, even though the flow from the development is, is less now after the fact.
Okay, but if there's need, if there needs to be any, if there needs to be any repairs, the, the city will take care of that then?
Correct. The, looking at those culverts and those pipes is the city's responsibility, yes.
Okay, the, the, the next.
Okay, the, the, the next thing is if we approve of this, the city, the DNR, MMSD, the third-party all says, okay, but let's, let's, we come in spring and summer and all of a sudden the issue is, is still occurring. What happens then? Because if I, if I approve of this, right, you know, I'm my, my, you know, this is my district. So what is the city going to do if this is still occurring? And after the HOA has dredged out the creek, what, what, what's going to be the responsibility of the city? How is that going to be fixed?
Sure. Like I said, we'll continue to monitor the vegetation until the erosion control permits closed. We need to make sure that's completed before, before we close that out and aren't dealing with the developer anymore. But up until that point, we are going to be enforcing everything in our development agreement, everything in our ordinances to make sure that gets addressed. And then after the downstream items are addressed, we'll continue to monitor the situation. Like I said, a lot of the flooding is happening in our right-of-way, overtopping the street right there. So that's something we can easily monitor and continue to look at in the future.
So I just want to make sure that the residents know that they're not going to be left in the lurch where they're going to be alone in dealing with this. If, if they have done everything, if the Huntington Park has done everything and is still, and the city has done everything, and if they're still having issues, the city will take, will help out.
Yes, as long as it's something we can enforce by our ordinance and development agreement. And I also forgot to add that the, the pond is recertified every five years by an engineer, has to go out there, survey it, make sure there's not dysfunction with it, which would, could definitely impact downstream properties. So we make sure that occurs every, actually two years after the development and then every five years thereafter.
Okay. Because this past Saturday, I walked down Stanford Court. I went home to home and talking to people. And the people that were home, they had, had concerns because if they've had issues in the prior, even prior to Swan Ridge Farms development, where they've had flooding, where they could not get out. So this is not something that has happened just because of Swan Ridge Farm. It's something that's happened in years past. And I guess I wanted to make sure that it's corrected so that people that are in that, on that court, that they can actually leave their, after a heavy rain, they can leave the subdivision and not have to wait till the water subsides. So. So I, I'm, at this point, I feel comfortable right now, but I'm, I'm putting my faith in, in this public works and, in the city, making sure that this is going to be corrected. And that the vegetation, you're going to monitor the vegetation from the, the new subdivision, and we'll see in the spring and in summer whether it holds or not.
Alderman Stralcheck?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, you're on the planning commission, and I know you were, you were ahead of this.
Alderman Stralcheck?
Yeah, as, as you remember, I ran the flag up the pole pretty, pretty high on this in planning commission because, you know, water, water is the biggest concern to residents and in neighborhoods. The developer did reach out to me to ask me if I had any questions and things like that, you know, prior to this as well. So I did want to commend them for, you know, doing that outreach. You know, I guess Cole, you know, what, what he is asking that we're not answering is, you know, A, my concern at planning commission came in the sense that it flooded all season. The work was done later in the year. We didn't have a clear articulation to the planning commission, nor we had kind of a real summary articulation on the, on the work that was done that makes it different than when the flooding was occurring. So I'm looking to have that tonight in order for a yes vote. You know, that's how we get the yes vote is to have an articulation that the problem's fixed and an understanding of why. And then I think what Alderman Hancher was asking, and he wasn't being as bold with it as I possibly trend to do, is if this still floods in spring and there's still issues, what's the clawback and what can we do to go through? You know, we've gone through compliance, we've had MMSD sign off on it, we've had people do designs for water flow and water flow analysis. But if they're wrong and it still floods, what's the clawback from the city's standpoint? Good, bad, or indifferent? I want to hear that answer as to what that is and what that means, or if there's something that we can put in place for one additional inspection that has tooth that could require, you know, significant corrective action if for some reason this does flood.
Sure. And real quick with the, with the second part that you mentioned, if, you know, if we do find something later that was somehow missed, our, our development agreement, our ordinances are absolutely still in play regardless of whether the subdivision construction is done or not. That developer's held that agreement regardless of where it is. So that's something we could definitely go back on and ensure it gets fixed if, if something, if one of their obligations wasn't met, right? Is there, is there a way I can show you the, the, maybe my comment to the second question or your first question?
Yeah, sure.
Bear with us.
I talked to Will a little bit earlier on. It is a more overarching policy, you know, kind of discussion on how we articulate water issues and things moving forward. So we'll be working, you know, behind the scenes to.
Sure.
The public worries about the water because they don't understand, and we talk, you know, generalities or MMSD sign off. And, and, you know, me as a resident, you know, if this was next door to my house, even being an alderman, I would still have questions, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I want to try to simplify those explanations kind of moving forward. And I appreciate you taking the time. I know you did your homework because I got a really nice email from you.
No, that's, that's totally understandable. And, and this stuff is, it's, it's a lot. So appreciate everyone being interested in trying to get their questions answered and everything. But just really briefly, an example of, at least looking back to, I think there were some photos from the, from the June rain event, that water was kind of coming down. Stanford, Stanford properties are kind of over here. North is to the right. So there was water kind of coming down. This is where the pond is in this outlet. There's water kind of coming down around here and, and going through the drainage easement where it goes to right now. Currently, you know, that, now that the subdivision's done, all of these lots on the, on the north side of Tundra Drive here, those have to go into the, into the pond. That's, I mean, that's where the houses are going to be. That's the whole point of putting ponds in, capture the runoff, right? Before, before that, and probably when that picture was taken, there's kind of like a berm that runs along the back of these lots that gets, you know, redirects the water that would otherwise go this direction and reroutes it into the pond. That, that wasn't completed yet in that, in that, at that time because there was a topsoil stockpile here. And so that was kind of the background on, you know, during the interim phase of construction, not all of the stuff is going to where it should be. It was just kind of, you know, being, following the natural course of the land as if a farmer were to be plowing it or whatever. So that was kind of the difference between before and after.
Great.
It's okay that it's full. The pond is not there to absorb water. It's there for, it's there for runoff and sediment control. So it's, it's supposed to be full. If it fills up, then, then the drainpipe at the top of it drains out, but it's going to sit at the level it's at. That's how stormwater ponds work. I guess I'd like to piggyback on something that Alderman Hancher brought up. There's a number of issues that predated the development, and all the stormwater maintenance regulations for MMSD in the city are centered around the development, not making it worse than it was before, but not necessarily solving issues on adjacent properties at the same time. That's, you can't hold that developer responsible for fixing the issues that surrounded it. They have to make sure they don't make, make to it and add it, and add to it and make it any worse. And I think that's what, we've seen the numbers in the packet, and that's what our process and MMSD's process is supposed to ensure. Now, whether it's working or not, could a professional engineer flub it up? And that's, that's why he carries a PE license and you can, you can sue him if he screws it up. But I don't think we have any indication that's happened here. When was all the major earth removal complete? I, I know we still have some, some, maybe some topsoil and vegetation things to finish out with the erosion control permit, but the, the major grading was finished when?
I think the major grading was finished early fall, like early November. I know they were still removing topsoil stockpiles up until mid-November, and maybe there's even a bit still out there. So, yeah, it was, it was late in summer, early fall.
We've instantly transitioned to, to winter now, so we don't have an opportunity to see it working in action.
Right.
So it puts us at a bit of a disadvantage to really judge what's going on. Are there any other comments from any aldermen, Alderman-Tolaco?
I guess I have a more general comment that I'd like to, for the committee, the whole, maybe we need to just relook at some of our stormwater and drainage and runoff in general, especially with this like last flooding that happened. The town center is like highly developed, but we are also realizing that some of our like storm drains maybe aren't functioning at the full capacity as they fill in with silt over years and stuff. And maybe that's something as a city, we could maybe manage a little bit better or just take another look at it. Because I do think we, flooding is serious. I'm, you know, I'm glad to see people that turned out today about concerns for their house and stuff. And I know that us as a city don't take this lightly. These are your homes. And I do think that maybe we need to just relook at a couple of things, and that wouldn't hurt. And that would also educate everyone to have a better understanding of maybe the engineering that goes behind it as well. So I think it would be a good thing for everyone.
Certainly, certainly put lots of focus on drainage over the past 10, 12 years. And we've had a drainage CIP list, which we've progressively chipped away at and made progress on. That's actually a, a pretty good success story. Not everything gets done immediately, but we've, we've knocked out a lot of big projects over time, working within our budget. So, yeah, maybe a re, if you weren't here for all that fun, maybe a reeducation on where, where we've been and where we're going would be appropriate at some point. Any other questions from anyone else? Or is there a motion?
So moved.
Is that move for approval?
Move for approval.
Motion in a second. Any, any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Bratt?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck?
No.
Alderman Tolaco?
Aye.
All right. Eyes have it. That resolution passes, but staff will continue to monitor and close out all appropriate permits and be there to see it functioning in the spring. Onto resolution 4245, a resolution approving three letters of engagement for the completion of statutorily required audits of tax increment finance districts three, four, and five with Baker Tilly of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, in the amount not to exceed of $57,500. This was recommended earlier this evening by finance and personnel.
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Bratt?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tolaco?
Aye.
And Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
That resolution carries. Onto resolution 4246, a resolution approving the City of Mequon's insurance program for fiscal year 2026 with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities' mutual insurance in the estimated amount of $311,008. This was also recommended earlier this evening by finance and personnel.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Just like to point out that staff was able to realize considerable savings over the previous year of roughly 17% on the insurance programs. So a good job finding a couple of tax levy pennies to rub together. Every little bit helps. Any other questions for staff? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Bratt?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tolaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
And Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
That item carries as well. On to resolution 4247, a resolution adopting the City of Mequon's fee schedule for fiscal year 2026. This too is recommended earlier this evening by finance and personnel.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Alderman Stralcheck?
I did want to highlight that we are gonna, you know, that we are approving this. We can alter this at any time, and we are going to review this a little bit more in-depth next month with regards to a couple of the other permits. If you have questions, you know, just please reach out to city staff on, you know, a fee that you think might need to be adjusting, because we'll do a little deeper dive as a committee next month. So in advance of that meeting, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, halls of favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That resolution carries. Onto resolution 4248, a resolution authorizing a second amendment of the state municipal financial agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for Mequon Road to include green crosswalk repainting in the Ozaki interurban trail. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works this evening.
Public Works recommended it, and I move resolution 4248.
Of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sadly, this will mean, this will mean that there's more road construction coming to Mequon Road, but bear with us a couple more, well, bear with the state a couple more years. Once it's all done, we won't see them again for a good long time. Any further comments or questions? I'm going to call the roll on this one. There's pretty, there's some big dollar numbers behind the scenes changing, so please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Bratt?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tolaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
And Alderman Bach?
Aye.
That resolution too passes. Onto resolution 4249, a resolution supporting the application for a transportation alternatives program grant through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for planning and design of side paths along portions of Donjuste Bay and Range Line roads. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works this evening.
Public Works recommended the resolution, so I like to move it.
Motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Oh, there's some downstream costs someday for this. Let's call the roll.
Alderman Bratt?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck?
Aye.
Alderman Tolaco? Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
And Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
That two carries. Onto resolution 4250, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of one Dodge Durango sport utility vehicle from Ewald Automotive Group of Hartford, Wisconsin, and the procurement and installation of related equipment from Taft Outfitting of Oshkosh, Wisconsin for the total not to exceed of $47,741. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Safety this evening.
Mayor, Public Safety took up resolution 4250 and approved. I recommend approval. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Alderman Stralcheck?
Yeah, just curious as to what the decision was to move away from Ford to Dodge.
Because they'll actually take your order.
What's that?
Because they'll actually take your order, I think, is the answer.
They are both.
It was at one point that we, that was the only thing we were able to get in a timely fashion. At this point, we're able to get both on a reasonably timely basis, but we have both, and they've both been working equally well. Is that basically correct, Chief?
As long as it works just as well.
Even better.
That's what I was trying to find out. And yeah. That's what I was trying to find out, and, yeah, great. Consistency of retrofits and things like that, so, yep, good. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcek?
Aye.
Alderman-Tolaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
And Alderman Brat?
Aye.
That passes as well. Onto Resolution 4251, a resolution approving a change to Southern Ozaki Fire and EMS Department's capital improvement program to authorize the purchase of one ambulance from American Response Vehicles of Columbia, Missouri, for $333,110. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Safety this evening.
Mayor, Public Safety approved Resolution 4251, and I recommend approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion or comments? If we order this today, we'll get it in about two years, so don't expect it to show up anytime soon, but we don't pay anything till it shows up, so, now we can earn interest on the $333,000 for a couple more years, which isn't a bad thing. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Stralcek?
Aye.
Alderman-Tolaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
And Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
That item carries as well. Congratulations, Chief. We have no specified unfinished business from prior meetings. We have some specified new business. We have the appointment of election inspectors and special voting deputies for the period of January 1st, 2026, through December 31st, 2027. Those are in your packet, there's a lengthy list, and the Mid-Muraine Municipal Court Administrative Committee representative appointment of Jessica Wolfe. Is there a motion to approve those appointments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, halls in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those appointments are approved. We have just one item left on the agenda, potential closed session for personnel evaluation of the city administrator. The common council may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 print 1 print C. Wisconsin's, well, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performing evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and then may reconvene into open session to take such action as deemed appropriate. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'm going to go into closed session.
All right, motion in a second to go into closed session, please call the roll.
Alderman-Tolaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcek?
Aye.
Mayor Nurban?
Aye. We will now reconvene in the closed section, I do not, closed session, I do not anticipate we will return, so good evening, everyone.